I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Tonight is March fif-- oh, nope, sorry. I was reading the last agenda. Let's see, what do we got? The 12th, March 12th, and it is 7:01. The first item on the agenda is the prayer and pledge. And Mr. Rose gonna pray for us? Okay. I don't see Mr. Rose. I'm gonna pray for us.
There you go.
Oh, here he is.
Heavenly Father, as we gather tonight to do the work of the city, Lord, I just pray that you would-- your favor would be all over this great city of Fairview, Tennessee. Lord, may I ask you to put a hedge of protection around our police and our fire workers, Lord, would just keep them safe. And also, we ask you to bless all the city workers. And, Lord, we just ask you to give wisdom to all of the Board of Commissioners tonight as they make decisions for the city. Or we just ask you to bless all the citizens of Fairview, Tennessee. Thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item two, approval of the agenda.
Ma'am Chair, we have some corrections to be made for addresses on item A. And I'll leave this item B off somewhere right front.
Yes.
You want Michael's corrections?
Yes, I think this is item 10A.
Item 10A.
Right. And the address is wrong because on the property, it should read without a number saying located on Fernvale Road. And then B pertains to the same case, and it should be changed too to say located on Fernvale Road. There's not been an address assigned to the property yet.
Old Nashville Road.
Oh.
That's what it says, it's Old Nashville Road.
Old Nashville Road. If we can change that.
So both A and B, it needs to be changed to Old Nashville Road?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
That's first reading of the ordinance. You can go ahead and pass it, and we'll make the correction for a second reading.
Any other changes to the agenda? Yes?
Mayor, I received, as I assume the rest of us did, a request from the City Recorder to add one item to old business and two items to new business. Did you receive that?
I did. Go ahead, you can tell us where they are.
Okay. 9/8 was discussed to take action on second reading of bill 2015-05, the ordinance for amendment to the city of Fairview, Tennessee budget for the fiscal year 2014-15, second reading, park utility vehicle in park space. And then under new business, it was discussed and take action on business resurfacing grant between T-Dot and Ferns. And then, T-M-G was discussed and take action on R-J and contract upgrades to our comp.
Well, actually, she has them. I'm here, it was just gonna take me longer because I didn't print off the-- but it's gonna take me longer to flip through them. But 10F.
May I make a statement on 10F?
Sure.
We haven't had the T-Dot approval on this just yet. Do y'all wanna consider it and then move for deferral later or add it to the next agenda on the 19th?
It's just the resurfacing. I don't know, is it gonna hold y'all up? Do you need us to?
No, ma'am, it won't hold us up because we can't do anything till T-Dot approves it anyway.
Okay, let's just defer. So 10F actually will be 10G. So we're gonna change that. Okay. And this was the RJ Young. Move that for I won't stumble on that. Is that the no other changes? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Approved, second.
Okay, we got a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three is citizens' comments, and we have Ms. Henireta Hall.
Good evening. It's been a while since I've stood up here and talked to you guys. Glad y'all have had a good year so far, right? I wanna thank you for allowing us to speak. And I have been posed a couple of questions, and I thought I would pose them back to you guys and let you all answer them. One is, when and why is it not on television, this meeting or any of the meetings? And when will it be? Because there are a lot of people that watch it on the television. They don't know how to use the computer. They can't do the live feed on the computer. Okay? So that's one thing for you to hopefully answer. And the next thing is, is I understand that the YouTube recordings, what's being posted on YouTube, has been edited. And there was a question as to what and why it's being edited. Because somebody's been here, and then they watched it on the video, and it's not the same. So there's a question about that. I just thought I'd just pose that to you. I'm just the messenger. Okay? I appreciate you all's work, and thank you for what you do.
Okay, thank you. And you know what? I need to take this moment and just tell you, thank you so much for you spearheading the Citizens' Appreciation Lunch. And it just meant so much to the employees, just to be recognized. And thank all the citizens for their part in it, and those that came served. And, you know, great job. I mean, we really appreciate it.
We wanted to serve them back because they serve us every day.
I know.
At least we could.
Well, thank you for taking your time. Okay. Item number four would be awards and recognition. Do we have anything tonight?
I don't have anything tonight on awards and recognitions.
Okay, thank you. And just once again, thank you to all our public safety and the public works for keeping us safe in the bad weather. So I'll use that opportunity to say it one more time. Okay, item five, public announcements.
Mayor, I have one.
Okay.
Met with Dr. Rice earlier this week, and June the 13th will be the grand opening of the History Village complex, the Triangle School, the post office, and the medical clinic. So we want to go ahead and get that on the calendar, and it'll be June the 13th. We were gonna try to do it, but we ran into, of course, Memorial Day and then the fishing rodeo, which is a big deal for those of us that work and volunteer at the park. It's on the 6th. So the 13th looks like the best day, and we want to lock it in.
Right. Do you have a time on that?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
It'll start at 10 o'clock in the morning. It'd be 10 to 12. Though, he's still working on the speakers and stuff like that, and so as soon as I get further information, I'll pass it on. But we want to go ahead and get the date firm.
Great. I appreciate all the work you've done to try to make that happen. And I appreciate that committee and Dr. Rice. Okay, any other? Y'all have anything?
I have.
Okay.
I have a reminder of the emission testing every Monday and Tuesday from 7:30 to noon. And I'm gonna wait and let Keith, under staff comments, make the announcement on the patching that's been done. So I'm gonna take this back to him, let Keith come to the podium.
Okay. We'll be glad to hear from him. And that brings us to item six, staff comments.
Just wanted to let everybody know that the guy's street department has been out working, putting, filling potholes. They filled 109 just this week. We've used 173 bags of our cold mix that we get from various companies, and that actually came to about $2,253 since January.
Wow.
Just to let people know, we are out. There are some places that we cannot repair with the cold mix. The thinner the cover asphalt that they put down is-- the cold mix will not bind to it, so it just wastes material. So as soon as we get the hot mix running, we'll get those places addressed too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if you wanna start, how about you, Mr. Humber? Yeah, and make sure you get that on and closed.
Okay, how does that sound?
Y'all hear 'em? Okay. Perfect.
Yep. I don't have anything. I'm kidding. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out that I really feel like the-- and you're seeing now the results of our codes review committee. And, of course, I know you're there and you understand what I'm gonna say. But it's-- I think it's been very good, it's very helpful. And it's the people on that committee that are getting this done. It's not really staff. But we're moving through some things, and we're working on it, and I think it's really been productive. And we'll continue to do that every month. But I think it's really to-- it's really the people on that committee, because it really-- we really do get a lot of good input from that committee. So I just wanted to mention those people because I think they do a really good job.
I agree.
That's all I have.
Yeah, we had the opportunity to go to economic development meeting today, and another city was talking about having to pay for an outside source to come in. And as I got to talking to them after, they're pretty much doing the same thing our own codes review committee is doing now. Granted, it may be on a larger scale, but I thought that was very interesting that basically we're already doing it and not having to pay to have it done. So I appreciate the citizens that volunteered to do it. Okay, let's see. Mr. Hall, we'll wait for you to the end, and we'll wait for the attorney. Brandy, do you have anything for us tonight?
Just one thing real quick. We are collecting delinquent taxes at this point for 2014 and the 2013 deadline for real property taxes, March 27th. And we put a notice in the newspaper and on the website, and there was one citizen comment that I wanted to address because she thought it was, I guess, rude of us to post in the paper and to put people's names out there. But this is statute. It's something we are required to do by law. So it's not something we're trying to do to embarrass someone or anything like that. It's just something we're required to do as part of the process to attempt to collect those taxes.
Thank you for clarifying that. I know that it's-- no one expects to see their name in the paper, but it is something that they-- we are required to do, and it happens all over. So it's not this Fairview only. So I appreciate you making those comments. And thank you to everybody that paid them own time, and I'm sure that we'll be receiving more now that some people are aware time slips on them and don't really always realize that it's already past the deadline. So, Mr. Darty, do you have anything?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We had our financial review committee meeting prior to this meeting, and it's hard to believe already in the ninth month of this fiscal year. And we're gonna hold a special FRC meeting on 3/26 to finalize our revenue projections for next fiscal year and also put together what we feel like is the strategic plan to finish out this year. We would like to hold a joint committee workshop with the BOC and FRC on March 31st at 6:00 PM. And this will be a layout of what the finance review committee feels like, is what that strategic plan needs to be for the rest of this current fiscal year. And then, like I said, on that 3/2, or I guess that'd be 4/2, April 2nd meeting, if anything needs to be done by the board, that'll give us time to implement any actions we need to make as a staff. Thank you.
Okay, so the 4/2 meeting is for any changes that the Board of Commissioners would like or the finance?
If there's anything that comes from that March 31st meeting, we can bring it to that first meeting in April, and that still gives us time to make any actions on our side.
Okay, and do you wanna give an update on taxes? Or I know the sales tax hasn't come in yet. We talked about that today, and you probably-- when do you project it?
The February finance report is complete, and it will be-- I'll do that report next, I guess, next week. You should have that in your packets. We did-- we are seeing some positive signs, although we are still behind on where we thought we'd be. We're behind about $200,000 on revenues where we thought we'd be. On the other end, we're ahead about $87,000 on expenditure side. So we're about $100,000 below where we thought we'd be at this point in time, if you take into consideration revenues and expenditures. One thing on the good is, and you'll see next week, is we're in the surplus for the first time this year, at $101,602 more brought in than we spent so far this year. So that's good.
Great. Did the finance committee discuss tonight any options of what you're gonna do? Is that gonna be put off until your next meeting as far as options if you do have to find cuts?
Well, we're looking at multiple options, and we've talked about all year long. We're going to finalize those into a plan on the March 26th meeting. And then we would like to bring our recommendations to that joint workshop on March 31st with the board, get the board's input. And then if there's any changes needs to be done or anything needs to be brought to that first meeting in April, we can.
Okay. Yes.
Mayor, if I could ask Tom a question. You spoke of a $200,000 shortfall that we have in revenue. Can you give us a breakdown of how much of that is sales tax revenue versus property taxes?
Right now, we're running about, I believe, $69,000 short on local option sales tax. It's coming from the county, which that's-- we'll get that. And then we're also behind-- about 100 of that is maybe between 100 and 125,000 is on sales tax. And then we're running behind right at about 70,000 on property taxes. So that's pretty much makes up the majority, the property tax and the sales tax is 98% of it.
The 60 to 90 you're saying from the county, is that owed to us, or is that where we projected too high?
Well, we project-- you might as well say we projected too high. We still may can close that gap some because we were projecting a 60-day turnover where we should have been projecting a 90-day turnover. So I think we can close that gap a little bit. I'm substantially going throughout the rest of the year, but I don't believe we'll totally close it all the way. We're probably gonna be under projections, but I don't think we'll be-- I don't think the gap's gonna widen, if that makes sense. I don't think-- I think we're-- I think we're going in the good-- I think our gap is gonna close. I think it's gonna be less than it is right now at the end of the year, the gap. Does that make sense?
It does make sense.
Okay.
I just didn't know if you had solid figures to go along with that. Have you realigned where we were that month off? Have you put that back in line to show where we would have been all the months we've been saying we were bad?
I have kept-- I have kept my numbers based on the projection we started out with the whole year. I didn't wanna jump them around. I just wanted to flatline it, and then when we go into next year, make all the adjustments. Where I just felt like I would get into trouble every time I got ready to make an adjustment. Well, I adjusted for this, I adjusted for that, I adjusted for this. I just wanted to make this was our beginning of the year projections, and we're gonna stick with it, and if we're off, we're off. And then next year, we'll know better.
And we're gonna be off about 30 days at the end of the year anyway, right?
That's what I was wanting to know, if you corrected. Did you go back and change what we said we got in February, we really got in January? Have you gone back and realigned it? Because you said we've increased each month in our sales tax revenue. And if-- just say we had a shortfall in January of 10,000. If we put in the money from the proper month that was in there, we could have broken even. We could have been in the red. I mean, I don't know where that would leave us. You have not realigned that since we were off that 30 days?
No. No, I'm just going with--
Because we're not-- for the last nine months, basically, we've given the citizens the wrong information. Now, we didn't do it on purpose. We didn't know it was off.
It's a month off.
But we haven't gone back in and corrected it. Do the-- does the finance review committee have the correct? Have they seen it put in perspective of how it really needs to be?
Yes. And then what you gotta realize is it's a projection. The real numbers that have come in are there. I mean, it's-- that's what we brought in is the number. And a projection is all it is, is when we think it's gonna come in. And it's not anything other than it a tool--
We understand that, but the citizens look at that as, well, they said they were gonna get this, and there was a shortfall.
Right.
And then there was a shortfall. And there was a shortfall every month. Well, the shortfall's not as much as we led them to believe is what I'm getting at.
Correct.
And we didn't correct that to show that to them.
Right.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, if I may. Mr. Darty, the first set of numbers that you gave us are numbers based on where we are based on projections. Is that right? In other words, you said that there were $200,000. There's $200,000 difference in the projection of income versus expenses?
Yes, it's kinda difficult to discuss this when my finance report is gonna be in your hands for next meeting, but I'll give you the numbers right now. Sorry. As far as expenditures for the year, we projected as of February 28th on our-- let me back up. As far as our revenues, we projected as of February 28th, we would have brought in What we brought in was $3,726,311. This is a shortfall of $197,786. On the expenditure side, we projected as of February 28th, we would spend $3,711,972. And the city has spent $3,624,709. So our projections, our year-to-date spending is under projections by $87,263. So that puts us at $110,523,000 behind projections.
That's exactly what I was wanting to know. And my point is, those numbers, those numbers tell us how good we're doing at projecting.
Right.
Right? They don't necessarily tell us where we are financially at this point in time in this fiscal year.
Well, and you-- what these projections are, they are the budget.
I understand. They're a tool for us to use.
But it ends up budget, but we're trying to time it. You can't just sit here and say, well, because you've got a $5.2 million budget, it's not gonna be the same expenses every month, the same, every month. You're gonna have more, some are gonna be every three months, or some are gonna be annually, some are gonna be biannually. You know, so you're trying to time those expenses with the projections.
But those projection numbers can paint a picture that's different than our current financial situation. Because if I heard you correctly, you're saying for the first time this fiscal year, we are now at a surplus. We have generated more revenue than we have spent.
Correct.
Okay. And that's a better position than what the projections would-- and I think this is maybe what Stuart was saying. That's actually a better financial position than what the projections would show. We're not very good at projecting, or at least that's what those numbers look like.
If I-- could I have something here I think might be helpful? That the projections are developed as a tool, and that's a good word for it, in order to prepare the budget, which is actually nothing but a projection. I track for myself, as a member of the finance committee, I track what real that we have-- we've gotten in revenue versus what we have, and I use the 90-day lapse. I also track what the state's gotten, because the state reports are available fairly quickly. Like you can already get the state report for March. I just don't know how much our check will be. But I know our check will be from December, and I know what they collected in December, which was the state had a 22% increase in sales tax in December. So we should get some portion of that. But you're absolutely right. From a fiscal standpoint, we have spent $100,000 less than we have taken in. But the budget that we adopted, which was based on projections, if Mr. Hall and his staff went out and spent, which they could legally, everything that was in the budget, we would be $200,000 short. But he's not doing that. He's actually-- they're spending less than what we're actually taking in. So the real issue for me at this point, if it continues in the same trend, as a member of that committee and as a commissioner, is at the end of the year, how big will that surplus be? Because that surplus between what we actually took in and what we actually spent is what we will have to repopulate these funds that we're wanting to repopulate. So in real money, that's when we will be able to decide, was it a successful year or not? But as the projections go, we would have to go in-- I mean, things fluctuate from one month to the next. We might have made a projection because last year, we paid this in February, and then this year, we had to pay it in January, and that would cause our projections to be off or vice versa, or, you know, those kinds of things. So it's important to understand if you were spending every bit of what you had in the budget. But again, I wanna comment that Mr. Hall and his staff, all the division leaders and all the managers and all the employees down rank and file, have done an excellent job of managing that, and they're $100,000 to the good. So if that trend continues, we should maybe not meet our projection, but still have a very successful financial year because we spent less than what we took in, which is the first time we would have done that in several years. Does that help?
Oh, I understand. Yeah, I think-- I was sort of playing off what Commissioner Johnson said, that that $100,000 surplus number to me is more important right now than how we-- how well we've done at projecting.
And just to bring up, just as they are saying, there is that small window that the city staff can sit down and find cuts, not to spend what our projection, for we can balance our budget or come up with ways. So I think maybe next meeting, y'all will be able to kinda give us some clear pictures. But they-- I mean, city staff's done a great job. I mean, they really have. I mean, you've heard us talk about last year and where we were, and then what they've done this year. And, you know, the projection is a great tool, and we need it. And it's-- a good way to keep us in balance, but, um, like Commissioner Bussell says, you can't, you don't know when a flood's gonna come, or you had to buy extra salt, then, you know, there's always gonna be things, but, um, with that said, you know, I appreciate what y'all do. Did y'all have anything else while we're on Tom? Did?
Yes, ma'am. The only other thing that we needed to cover was, we had suggested a joint workshop, we're gonna meet on the twenty-sixth, I think Tom said that, but we'd like to meet with the board, uh, as a whole, on the thirty-first, which is a Tuesday, to talk about what we have, so that if there's any legislative action required by the board, we could take care, take care of it on April the second, which will be our first meeting in April. And the reason for that is that we want to give Mr. Hall and staff the maximum amount of time between now and the end of fiscal year to make the adjustment, if, if we mandate it. Most of the stuff, Mr. Hall should be able to take care of, if there's a need at all, but the, uh, is that date a good date for the majority of us to meet with the Finance Committee, I guess, is what, is what I'm asking.
What was the date again?
March thirty-first, it's a Tuesday at six o'clock.
I'm good.
Let me check. Yeah, that's good. Or?
Flash Mayor.
Yep, March thirty-first.
I can do it.
Okay, it's, alright. Do we need to make a motion that we would have a workshop, joint workshop, or just show up?
As hard as it is, it can just be called.
Because the Finance Committee's gonna do it, we're gonna put it in the paper and, and have it there.
I don't know that, um, do we need to make a motion, or, and can we do it during the finance? I mean, this is Tom, the, I don't know if the time is appropriate anyway, because it's the staff comments. We can't really make a motion.
But a workshop can be called without a motion, so all, all we do is have, need to instruct them to post it, and so that we're-
Yeah, no, you gotta do as advertised, because you can't take any votes there, anyway.
Right. Okay, so we're, we're-
The public has a right to know that it's gonna be had.
Okay, we're instructing y'all to take, um, Commissioners Bussell's, um, advice, or Tom, whoever, the ones, and they'll give you the dates, and, um, we'll get that in the paper.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, moving on. Approval of the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the item eight is the consent agenda.
Item number A, approval of the minutes from February the nineteenth, twenty fifteen, Board of Commissioners meeting. Item B, second reading of Bill twenty fifteen dash four, ordinance number eight sixty-nine, an ordinance to amend the City of Fairview, Tennessee Municipal Zoning Code, Article seventeen, Section sixteen dash one oh four point three, Board of Zoning and Appeals membership. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and second, and I apologize, I did see where you wrote, we, um, we didn't have to do seven, because it's really included in eight, but I apologize, I didn't see. So we'll vote twice, if that's okay, just to keep it on the consent agenda. Did anybody have any requests to, um, remove anything?
No.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, we got a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, old business, we are gonna have nine A.
Nine A is a, uh, ordinance, an ordinance for an amendment to the City of Fairview, Tennessee budget for fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen budget. If I'm not mistaken, this is include for the, um-
Park utility.
Park utility vehicle.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries. New business, item A.
Discussing or take action on Bill number twenty fifteen dash oh seven, ordinance number eight seventy-two, an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the City of Fairview, Tennessee located at, I'm gonna leave that out there, because it's incorrect at this time, uh, do we wanna make a statement, why, or just?
Yeah, just go ahead and include Old Nashville Highway and pass it.
It'd be Old Nashville Highway instead of Ferengi Road.
Right, and we'll have that amended before the second reading.
Okay, just so the public knows what it is, uh, owned by Timothy R. Mangram and wife, Jessica Mangram, as shown on the Fairview General Optical map, listing of assessment road map, zero forty-two parcel, zero six-five dash dot one-two, one point oh-three acres from RS ten to RS twelve. Mr. Mangram's present. I move to approve.
Second.
Second, it's RM twelve.
I thought that's what it said, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, we got a first and second discussion. Uh, just for clarification, it doesn't, um, but why doesn't it have a number? It hadn't been assigned, is it an, uh, was it subdivided, or what's the?
No, it was, it was an old parcel, and a lot of the old parcels in the city just don't have addresses. And, and just for clarification, the map and parcel number is correct.
Okay.
So it's just the Ferengi Road that's the wrong. I, I looked it up on the county's website, the map and parcel is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number B, I'll make a statement before, and it's the same situation as far as location, am I correct?
Yes.
Discussing or take action on Resolution number zero eight dash fifteen, a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comments on changing the zoning of certain property in the City of Fairview, Tennessee, located at Old Nashville Highway should be concerted in there, owned by Timothy R. Mangram and wife, Jessica Mangram, as shown on the City of Fairview General Optical listing, assessment road map, zero four-two parcel, zero six-five, that, dot, one-one-two, one point three acres from RS ten to RM twelve. This resolution sets the public hearing from March the nineteenth, twenty fifteen, at seven P.M., Fairview, Tennessee, City Hall, move to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Can we just make sure that these, they match on the parcel numbers?
Yeah, there's a tie bar.
Match the actual property?
Match each other in, when they come back for second reading.
You will, but although this is a resolution, it will become effective if you pass it tonight. What your motion will need to say, though, is that the, uh, locate, located at Old Na- Old Nashville Highway, and one other thing in this, the public hearing is set for April second, because it, because the last meeting was canceled, so your, your, uh, uh, motion will need to insert the correct address, and it'll have to say that the public hearing will be April second. It would've been April nineteenth, had we been here the last-
Add that to your motion.
If you, if your motion, make the motion in that manner, we can go ahead, because the resolution will be final if you choose to pass it.
I make a motion to approve both, um, pending the insertion of the correct street address and changing the public hearing to four-two instead of March nineteenth.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and we didn't have to do anything, even though they made a prior motion, this just-
Took care of it.
Took care of everything.
It would by implication repeal the other motion.
Okay.
Item C, discuss or take action on Bill number twenty fifteen dash oh eight, ordinance number eight seventy-three, an ordinance to amend the City of Fairview, Tennessee Municipal Zoning Code, Article sixteen, Section sixteen dash one oh two point five, building permits, and to authorize a non-enforcement of tw- of the two thousand and nine International Co- Building Code, Section one oh five, permit, sub- subsection one oh five point two, work exempt from permit, sub-building, paragraph one, which has been adopted by the City of Fairview, shall not be enforced by the Code Department of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, and shall be treated as deleted. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second, any discussion?
Just to point out, these are some of the changes that were brought forward and passed on from the Planning Commission to the Board of Commissioners, for changes from the plan- from the zoning, um, committee.
Mayor, may I make a statement just for the clarification? We had the summary on there, which you have, but I wanted to explain to you the reason it was drafted in this manner, and what it actually does. Basically, the only thing it changes is, it will require all commercial buildings to obtain a, a building permit. You can no longer have one that's X size and get out of that, and then come back and add something, and come back and add something, and end up with a big conglomerate that was eight thousand square feet, and never had a permit. Uh, the reason we had to, uh, say that it would be treated as, as, uh, uh, on the, the National Building Code, uh, that it would be treated as if, uh, deleted, we can't change the National Building Code, but the way cities opt out is by saying that section will not be enforced, and that was the section that allowed you to build a building without a building permit. So we wanted to get rid of that, but I just wanted to explain it to you, because I'm not in the habit of going around and say, ignore something that the board has adopted. But in this instance, you'd be opting out of that section, the rest of it being forced as written.
Thank you, I really appreciate you explaining that, because I know a lot of citizens probably, um, you're going, what are you doing? So, um, I appreciate you, um, giving us explanation on that.
I would've, I would've had that question if I didn't know the background of it.
Yes, yes. Um, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Section D, discuss or take action on Resolution number zero nine dash fifteen, a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on an ordinance to amend the City of Fairview Municipal Building Code, Article sixteen, uh, Section sixteen dash one oh two point five, building permits, and to authorize a non-enforcement of two thousand and nine International Building Code, Section one oh five, permit, subsection one oh five point two, work exempt from permit, uh, sub-building, paragraph one, which has been adopted by the City of Fairview, shall not be enforced by the Code Department of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, and shall be treated as deleted. Move to approve. Second.
First and second, any discussion?
This, if I can, this falls under the same criteria as the previous one.
Okay.
Yes, sir, what'll have to happen with this is, and let me explain the reason that we decided to do it this way, uh, I think it's more efficient. Uh, zoning ordinances, rezoning, uh, ordinances have to be the final approval by the Board of Commissioners, only the commission can rezone property or pass zoning ordinances. But the statute requires that the Planning Commission see it. It doesn't require that they approve it, they can send it to this board as not recommended for approval, approval, or they can take no action at all, but they have to see it. On the rezoning of land, those applications are made to the Code Department. So generally, they go to the Planning Commission first, because it makes more sense, they do, they take their actions, and then the board takes its first reading, and the second reading, you have, you have the public hearing at that time. On the ones that are, uh, the zoning ordinance itself, not rezoning property or something, but changing anything in the zoning ordinance, the Planning Commission, uh, has to act on it. Now, when they act on it, it's not important, other than the fact of keeping it fluid smoothly. What we'll be doing with this is, you pass, you saw fit to pass it on first reading, it will then be referred to the Planning Commission, and then we'll bring it back to this board for the second reading, and the, uh, the, and the resolution prior to that, to set the second reading. The reason that's more effi- efficient than to do it the way we do the others that are required, uh, is this, if this board saw fit on the first reading, says this is outrageous, we're not gonna fool with it, then the Planning Commission wouldn't, would've wasted their time. So, you know, the meeting, uh, time used efficiently is very important, and they do have some really, uh, detailed discussions in the Planning Commission before they recommend this, so if we got, we got one that the board just, we're not gonna do this, then the Planning Commission would never have seen it. I just wanted to bring it up, so you know where we're going with this.
Yeah.
So it won't be at the next meeting, it's gonna be probably the second meeting in April.
It's scheduled for second, April the second, isn't it?
Yeah. That's just the resolution to set the, the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that will be there, but this, the one that you previously passed, the ordinance won't be there until the second meeting.
Um, just for clarification, I'm sure none of it's final until it, uh, it's approved and done all the, um, readings, but what happens is somebody, um, you know, if they come up now wanting to do this, um, is it gonna be, do we have any safeguards for, um-
Yes, you do, it's called legislation pending.
Pending, okay.
Once you pass the first reading, you could say, okay, this is pending, you're gonna have to abide by it.
Okay.
What we've got here.
Great, thank you.
Prior to that first reading, no, the fact that we thought about it, in all, in all respect, the fact that we thought about it, it's not legislation pending.
Okay, great. Yeah, okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that brings us to E.
Brings us to E, discuss or take action on Resolution number zero four dash fifteen, P.C., a resolution from the City of Fairview, Tennessee Municipal Planning Cup Commission to the City of Fairview, Tennessee Board of Commissioners, relative to the request to reduce the performance bond on this Walmart development. Frank?
We don't have a motion on the floor.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Okay, the, um, there's been a request for that, um, bond to be reduced, but we haven't gotten a recommendation from our city engineer, um, on how much it should be reduced, so I'd recommend this be carried over.
Okay.
Do we get a specific number? Because, uh, this is a little unusual, because the Planning Commission usually, um, sets the bonds and, and reduces them.
Okay, I, I, yeah, I agree, I, I think if we don't know, and we haven't had Will, you know?
We have one question on it, what is there, it, what is the, when does the bond run out?
I'm sorry.
When does the bond run out?
Oh, the bond doesn't run out until, uh, it's a good long while on this, but, uh, this was, was, uh, actually, this is not the way we normally do business, although I, I kinda like it, I think maybe we should, but this was at the request of the city engineer, that the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission approved this, that we send, that the Planning Commission sent this in the form of a resolution, simply because it's out, a little bit out of the ordinary, and that we could have it down in writing and, and understand what is, uh, is here, and it not get involved in some sort of a calamity somewhere, but what this, uh, what, uh, the city engineer had actually recommended in, in, in writing was that the present bond be converted to a maintenance bond, because they have done everything that that bond covers, and he wanted to convert it to a maintenance bond, which at this time would be for one year. Once they convert the, uh, performance bond to a maintenance bond, uh, it, they'll, that bond will be in effect for one year, or a letter of credit for one year, and it's for forty thousand dollars, and that time will not start to run, because Walmart's a great company, but if this stuff has to go up the ladder, sometimes it takes a while to get back. So it's not un, out of the realm of reality, that very well, uh, this thing could be communicated to them, it'll have to be communicated to the, to Walmart here, and then they'll send it on, um, but the actual time for the one-year running of the maintenance bond will not start until they convert the performance bond or letter of credit, I don't recall which one it was, uh, to a maintenance bond or maintenance letter of credit. So if you should fit to pass this, the only thing left to do is pass it on to, uh, to Walmart, because he, he did, the present maintenance, I mean, sorry, the present performance bond is forty thousand dollars, the proposed maintenance bond is forty thousand dollars. So if everything they did up there went up, which it, it should, it should cover it, but I don't, I don't think, I'm real that everything would go up.
Okay, um, so this wasn't on the, um, Tuesday's meeting?
No, ma'am, it was on the one before.
The one before?
Yes.
And so Will already gave his recommendations?
Will, in writing.
In writing, and the Planning Commission already voted?
They voted to approve it.
Okay.
Under the circumstance that it won't start to run until it's converted from the performance to maintenance.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Frank, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, please.
Are you okay with that?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And the city engineer requested that it come up to this board in the form of a resolution, simply because, as everyone knows, the Planning Commission can, can terminate the bond, or, or can extend the maintenance bond, but they can't accept the improvements that are, that will be dedicated to the city.
Okay.
And that's the reason we want it down in writing, because what it would've amounted to, if they'd allowed the bond to be reduced or terminated, would've been a tantamount to a quasi-acceptance of the, of the, uh, improvements, and Planning Commission can't do that.
Okay, and just for this record, to clarify, because we had a little confusing, um, confusion at the beginning, um, when we convert this, all the work's been completed, and-
To the satisfaction of the engineer.
And we're just changing this over, keeping the same amount, it's just moving to, rolling over to a maintenance bond.
Right, and typically, the way that comes up, it, it's like in a subdivision, where the, the board accepts the streets, they don't send up a resolution, because it's usually not that involved, you just convert it from a maintenance to, I mean, from a performance to some sort of a maintenance bond, and the board approves it and you move on, it's in the minutes.
Okay, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I've, I've heard that we're keeping this the same amount multiple times, but I see in the title, it says reducing, what are we, what are we? What are we, what are we?
No, it was reduced once before. They wanted, they wanted to reduce the bond, and he kept it at the same thing.
We're just simply converting it from a performance to a maintenance.
From a performance to $40,000 to a maintenance. And I can't tell you where it was a bond or a letter of credit, but we don't really care. Thank you. No, I was doing it, thank you.
Am I correct in saying this is going to convert to a three-year?
No, sir, because that wasn't in consideration at the time.
I just want to make sure everybody knew that because we're fixing to do it.
Yeah, it says one year in the resolution.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Hall.
I have a question for legal. Can we use this resolution regardless of whether it's Walmart in the future for other places or does it have to stay strictly as Walmart?
No, we can use that resolution anytime the planning commission recommends it. We'll send a resolution. I think the reason it hadn't been done in the past was typically you're taking like the whole thing and not just a portion of this, just some of the things that was left. Or it's like a residential subdivision where you're just accepting the streets, and nobody had ever requested it before. But I have no problem with preparing a resolution, and then you've got, you'd always have it in the minutes. In other words, if you took the, if the board voted to accept the improvements in the such-and-such subdivision, it's always in the minutes. But I think probably the resolution doesn't take that much time to prepare. And it'd probably be a good investment by the city because if you ever got into a problem, you've got the exact thing that this board passed. You're not getting into a fight over words of what was actually said and what wasn't said.
Okay, so we're going to change that from Walmart to just a resolution?
Mr. Hall was saying was, could we use this same type of thing in the future?
Okay.
For whoever it is. No, this, this will stay.
Okay.
They'll be specific.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Humber. Yeah.
Maybe I'm not getting this, but the document actually talks about $97,000. What was it, Shannon? $97,800. How does that factor into $40,000?
Well, previously to this time, Walmart had, they do, they did this improvement, this improvement, this improvement. When they've got this handful of improvements done, they came back to the planning commission and said, we've already done all this. And they put their maintenance bond in place to, for that, and the period started to run. That reduced it down to this much, which was, in Will's opinion, was $40,000. So the bond was reduced back here somewhere over a year ago to $40,000.
So should the document that we're approving say $40,000 or should it say $97,000?
It says $40,000.
Because it says $97,800.
That was what it originally was.
Or am I just?
If you look on the second page, it says, the applicant, number three, Walmart is required to maintain all the accepted improvements for a period of one year after the formal acceptance of public right-of-way by the board. And the board's exception should only be after the applicant files a one-year maintenance bond of the city in the amount of $40,000. The, the bond at $97,800 will expire November 30th of 2015.
So, so we are really lowering it?
Yes.
We just already taken?
They lowered it to 40 because that's just a portion left of what was there.
That's.
And he wanted us all, he recommended we do this in a resolution. And I think it was a good recommendation because it's a lot more detailed than you just verbally talk about accepting something. Because of complications is the reason. I thought, I agree with him. I think it should be in a form of resolution. It will be for $40,000.
Thank you for explaining it because I was having, I couldn't make the adjustment.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have said anything, but Shannon was having trouble too.
Oh, that's fine.
The only thing that concerns me about this is we've had some issues with the trees and that. And if November 15th is the deadline, that's not a whole year.
Mayor, this, this bond is on, it's a, it was a performance bond for the improvements being made in the public right-of-way, the improvements that the city are taking, is taking over. It's not the landscaping.
Okay.
That's a different bond.
The trees aren't in the public right-of-way.
Thank you for clarifying.
Let me apologize for the wording of this because it should have, instead of reducing the performance bond, it should have said converting the performance bond to a maintenance because it's at the point of acceptance. And I think city attorneys explained that. We're now accepting, the engineers recommended acceptance of the improvements. And then from that point, we have a one-year that's a maintenance, which is sort of like a warranty period, if that makes sense.
And that doesn't start to run until this is communicated to them by the city. And then they put in place, and they probably, they'll probably do that locally, so it won't take too long. But if they put the maintenance bond in place June the 1st, it doesn't, it won't run until next June the 1st, not from the time we communicate it.
Yeah, thank you for clarification. Any other discussions? Okay, I don't remember, it's been so long. I guess we had a motion and a second.
Frank, is that correct?
Okay, great. I figured we did since we were in discussion, but want to clarify. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to 10F, which was formerly G.
Discuss or take action on the RJ Young contract for upgrading to Parks, Park Department, Police Department, Fire Department copiers, Commissioner Bressel. I will defer to our CFO for clarification and description.
Thank you, Commissioner Bressel. I was approached probably, oh, five or six months ago from the police department and saying, is there anything we can do about our copier? And I have since been in contact with RJ Young periodically for the last, over that time of trying to come up with a solution. I didn't realize that the police department, they, they do more copies downstairs than, than everybody else combined at the parks, fire, or us up here. And they've got, I don't know if anybody's been down there to see what they're using, but they are doing upgrade. And I finally have a, a contract that I think works in, in our favor. Worked well with RJ Young. What we've come up with is they have to buy out contracts. It's all lease, leasing the equipment. So, you know, you have to wait till the buy-down is favorable. But what we're going to do is they came up with a contract to where we're, they're going to put the same machine that we have upstairs, downstairs for the police department. They're also going to upgrade the parks, and they're going to upgrade the fire department. And they're going, it's going to increase our amount per month, $130. But what they're going to do, they, they gave us, I talked to them to give us a credit of $122 a month for the next four months to where our payment will stay the same during this, during this fiscal year. So the increase won't start till July payment. What it is, everybody except for admin and courts has a substantial upgrade in, in their, in their copiers. And I feel like this was a good deal. And I'm hoping that the board will approve it and the mayor will sign the contract and we can get some copiers in here in the next week or two.
Move to approve.
Second.
So we're currently, okay, we got a first and second discussion. We're currently paying $122?
No, ma'am. We're currently paying about $658 a month.
Okay, and you're wanting to add $130 to that?
It would increase, our monthly payment would be $780 a month starting in July. They're giving us $122 credit off of that $780 throughout the remainder of this fiscal year. Keeping our price the same throughout this fiscal year as it is currently.
Okay, currently, how many copiers do we have in this building?
Three, to my knowledge.
Three? Okay, and one of them is in this original 650 that we just did a couple of years ago, right? That's a newer one? Okay. And then downstairs, that you have a copier down there that we're paying the 654, but it's not adequate anymore?
Correct.
Okay. And what, how is it comparable to the copier up here?
It's the exact same machine.
So you're getting the exact same machine, but you're putting it downstairs?
Correct.
Okay.
Just for clarification, didn't we, at one time, they were having to come up here to make copies? Am I right?
Not anymore.
Not anymore, but at one time they were, didn't we just move the cop, when we got the new copy, move that one downstairs?
I'm not sure. That may have happened before I came.
That may have been before.
Yeah, that's probably before you'd time. So that's, I'm just putting it in my mind how old that copier really is.
I don't know.
You can probably tell us that, how old it is.
The copier downstairs?
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's not real old, it's just small. And it, it doesn't have the capacity to do what they need to do.
Okay, and what about at the fire department? Do they have a copier currently?
Yes, and I've got the, they do, they do some copying, but it's, it's, like I said, the police department is more than all of us combined. And their, the fire department's copier is comparable to what the police department has. And, and the, the, the parks copier is comparable as well. The only thing is the park has a very small amount of color printing that they do. The only other color printer we have is through a Xerox contract we have over in, in the court office. So we only have two color copiers that are, have capability of color. And we don't do that very often.
Okay, and the color is here in the office, and then who has the other color?
It's parks.
Parks.
And then the court, court, uh, court office.
But the court, and the court office has one too?
It's, theirs is color.
Okay.
I'm sorry, should I say, I should say codes, codes.
Codes.
It's in Diane's, where Diane is.
Okay. Have y'all considered, I mean, I'm sure that the police department needs it. Have you considered maybe moving some of those around? Because codes and the office are right across from each other. You would think y'all could share the same copier. And then you could take one of those and move it down to the police department. Then we don't have to change the contract, and we can keep it at 650.
I'm not sure why the, and I don't know why we have a separate contract from Xerox and RJ Young in the first place. A lot of that stuff happened before my time. I can, I can look at it, I don't know, I haven't looked at it.
Okay.
And then the thing, the big thing about the RJ Young is it is, it is two separate companies.
Yeah.
So you've got, you've got Xerox over in the codes, and you've got RJ Young over at us.
Okay, so that is not even in consideration of the 650. We're paying a different?
Correct.
Oh, okay. I, I don't like contracts for copiers, but I know in real world you have to have them because we outuse them versus when you're in, you know, a corporate situation. But it's a lot of money monthly, it seems like, thrown away. Okay, what about, I would like us to think about this longer because why, I still don't know. Even if it's a separate contract and it's a newer equipment than what the police department has, I still don't know why we couldn't move the nicer computer down to the police department and still this upper floor use the same copier.
You're taking, swapping the police copier, putting it up here, and taking hours and putting it down there.
Mm-hmm. Not, not the, I know you need one good colored copier up here. And the one that's in your office over to the right where the executive offices, they, that's a newer copier, and it does color, correct?
The one on our side does not do color.
Yeah, theirs is the one that does color.
The one in Diane's, in the codes, does color.
Okay. Well, I still would like to think about this a little bit more and see if we can't do some swapping around. Because police department doesn't need color, right? And if they do, they can come use the one here. I mean, maybe the point is giving them the one over in the, the right side of the office down and then use the, the other one over there. There's just, it seems silly to have one on each side. This is one building where all the employee would have to do is walk across either side.
Mayor, there's, there's a lot of citizens that would say, we don't need the size of building we have, and we could all condense down into one side probably. I don't, I don't understand what we're going on with this hundred and something dollars.
Well, you know, it may not be much to you, but if, when we're looking at ways of cutting our budget, I think $130, you know, it can matter. And it just seems, I mean, I've been up here a lot, and I know, I know they're working hard, but I know the copy machine, there's not that, they can't, they can coordinate. If somebody needs to do 200 copies, they, you know, they can do it in the morning. The next person, it's just, we're not that big of a organization where I think it would be worth our while adding additional money.
But we could buy the machines and not lease them. We don't need a contract.
Well, that, that's true, but the, one of the reasons we agreed to the contract is because they do wear out quicker.
Because the contract is smarter for us.
Mm-hmm, it wears, it wears out quicker.
It's, and most of the contract based on per copy?
Yes.
So, I mean, you're going to have the same number of copies if you take this department and this department, make it one department on one copy. You're going to end up with the same number of copies cost-wise that we have right now, am I right?
Yes.
So it's a moot point.
It is.
The amount, the number of copies we have doesn't matter in relation to the contract. It's the amount of copies we run in a year.
Right, if you go over a certain amount, they will, they charge you per copy for overs.
A lot more.
Right.
But I'm not getting rid of any copies. I mean, we're going to keep the same copiers, and we're going to keep the same amount. My suggestion is to try not to increase it, 130 a month, if we can accommodate everybody. It's different if we can't accommodate anybody. But I'm sure at any point, if we saw that Mayor Carroll was wrong, they would let us add another copier if we needed it. I just ask that we put it aside, get the, sit in the next half meeting, see if there's a better option. And if not, you know, I'd love for you to bring it back.
Frank, if I can ask you a question. When are, when are both the contracts up? Are they simultaneously, or is there a big span between the two of them, or?
They were having to buy down the contracts. I believe they still had at least two years on, on both contracts.
I think you'd be more economical to have one company servicing them because they're going to give you a better deal per copy when the copiers grow. But that's up to you, that's not, you know.
And I know we've looked at consolidating with the Xerox over there. And I've really, it's, it's, I think it's got three years on it, between two and three. So we're, we can't, it's not really economical to buy that down yet. But as it gets closer, I'm, I don't see any reason to have two, two firms.
Tom, but even though, what's the cost for the other, you know, we have that other contract. What's the other printer costing?
It is, and, and I'm thinking it is right at $340 a month.
Okay, we would still have that $340 even if we added the 130 to our 650. So the 780 you just said, would we still have the 340 after?
That 340 is from Xerox.
Yeah, so it's a different company, that's not going away.
Right.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we defer this till we can get some more information.
You want to amend the motion?
I'd like to amend the motion till we defer it. Okay, there's.
I'd like, so what, the information you would like is you would like to see what the, the, if, if, if the police copier can be used upstairs and ours go down to the police department. Is, is, this is what, you want to see if that's possible?
Well, what I'm, what I'm seeing is more or less the, is the codes one efficient enough to do the needs of the whole upstairs? And then you take the one up here and move it down? And if, I, I know that.
And I think what we're going to run into with that is I think we'll have to up the copies so much on, on their contract that it's going to raise the price on it quite a bit.
Well, and that, that may be the case, I mean.
I'm pretty sure it is because you're going to change the, the top out. I'm pretty sure it is, because you're gonna change the, the top out on number of copies, and it's gonna be a much higher rate for those copies that they're gonna use over here, because that's not even considered in their contract.
I would like you to give me the numbers, though, if we could do that, I would feel better about voting on it if I knew those facts, because it just seems logical, but it may, it may be totally not logical, and I've spent a lot of time talking about it, but, um, that's, it just seems like a lot of money to spend a month on copiers when we're in one building, yes.
Mayor, can I make a comment there, on the, on the code side, there is, there's already some, uh, efficiency in that, uh, we have several PCs on that side, that copier functions also as a printer for our PCs, and it also functions as a scanner when, because you'd be surprised how much stuff we need, we need to email, and we scan it, and what, what I'm saying is there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of, uh, activity on that copy machine from, you know, our side of the hallway, we do have, and I'm just saying there's some efficiency already worked in, because that keeps us from buying printers for every PC, you know, what I'm saying, I'm not saying we'd do that if it was across, we'll go anywhere and make copies, or pick up our, you know, prints, that's fine, um, it doesn't matter, we can go wherever you want to stay, we can walk across, but I think they ought to walk over to our side, when, no, I'm just...
I, I agree, and I know that would be a contingent of the whole sharing is...
Tom, do you, do you know what line item this is paid from? Is it nine forty-seven, office machinery and equipment?
Yes, I believe.
Fifteen hundred and sixty dollars for the entire next budget year would be the increase, is that correct? Is it a hundred and thirty, I heard, I heard a hundred and twenty-two, and I heard a hundred and thirty.
A hundred and thirty, the hundred and twenty-two is the credit we would get for the remainder of this, the four months of this fiscal year.
I don't feel that you would have presented this to us tonight if you did not think you could put fifteen hundred and sixty dollars in a five-point-two million dollar budget, are you, are you pretty certain that you think you can find that, that we would be able to add that in next fiscal year?
I would hope, I, I, I think, um, the, the main thing is, is that I'm concerned about is with all the, the new technology that, and it's not just the copying, but it's, it's the, all the e-citations that the police department's gone to, they need a bigger, what, uh, without a better word, a bigger, bigger computer brain down there to, to store a bunch of this information on, and, uh, and I'm, I don't know if that one up there will be enough, I know the one we use really works well with, for what we do, now, I don't know if we move that one upstairs, if it would work just fine or not, but, um...
The way it's presented tonight, is it adequate for the needs of our police department?
The, a system like ours, yes, yes, if, I think the one they have right now is not adequate for what they do.
And it's gonna cost us next budget year an extra fifteen hundred and sixty dollars for the entire year?
Yes.
That's all I needed to know.
Yes, Commissioner.
I know I sound like a broken record, but I swear it's deja vu to me, a month ago, we had this very same conversation about Tom being the front man and contacting the folks, and we still don't have Channel nineteen back up, we still don't do this, because we retain control of this, and I gave a, a, probably a too-long soliloquy, but to take expert, excerpts from that, when are we gonna let our staff do their job? The, the man that's in charge of the money has told us that, one, there's a need, and, two, he has the money. In fact, I'm not sure he even needs our approval through the end of the fiscal year, because if it's in the budget already approved by us, he could spend it, and it's not gonna cost us anything, so the, the, the bottom line to me, we're not going to solve what some perceive as a budget problem of the city by taking a hundred dollars here or two hundred dollars there, we're going to have to do something more significant than that, to, to cause, uh, the downtime of, of just employees having to walk all over the building to use copy machines, uh, with our security, you gotta stop, you gotta go through the doors, you've got to do, it, it just, to me, is, uh, maybe a penny wise, but it's a pound foolish, and, and I just can't go there, I, I think we're way down in the weeds over something that the CFO ought to have the ability, or the city manager at least should have the ability to make the decision, and we just move on.
That's the only reason it's here tonight is because it's a contract.
Yes.
Otherwise, they would have already done it.
It is a contract, and I do have to sign it, and I'm entitled, the citizens said I was entitled, to have discussion and ask questions, so I will take the honor they bestow on me, and I will ask any questions, if y'all do not want to vote for it, that's fine, but I will discuss this if they have to bring it in front of us, it's fine, if it's ten thousand under, and they can buy it, and they want to amend the budget, and we approve it, that's fine, but as far as I'm concerned, all I've asked is to revisit it, because I don't know that you thought of that, did y'all think about moving the copiers around? Was that an option in the discussion, Mr. Darty?
No, I, I did not take it in consideration, and the main reason was the amount of trouble they've had with the machine, uh, since I've been here for sixteen months, I know they've had it worked on at least five times, I don't know, I don't know how many, if that's accurate or not, but I know I've seen them there at least five.
Okay, Commissioner, right there.
Thank you, Mayor, just, just quickly, I wanna ask a few questions and make a comment, Commissioner Bissell talked about, us relying on, on you, and we do, and we, we're not attempting to micromanage you, I know that word has been thrown around in the past, we know that you're capable of doing your job, and you're doing an excellent job, uh, this, however, with that said, the service contract that some on this board questioned, uh, a few months ago, or a month or so ago, for this equipment that brings to the citizens Channel nineteen, after reflection, after our discussion, we, I think the management of the city decided that that was not a good deal, and we didn't do it, and that, that got kicked altogether. So it's, it's productive to have discussions, and I understand the bigger picture here, we're talking about fifteen hundred dollars over next fiscal year, and, and really no increase of any significance this year, and we're also talking about a contract that's far less than the service contract that we were talking about a month or so ago, so we're not necessarily comparing apples to apples here, um, I do have a couple of questions, though, so I have some clarity, because I wasn't here at the last, as, sounds like you weren't either, uh, when these copies were, or the copiers were, uh, I guess, purchased, or, or we did a contract with the copies a while, but, copiers a while back, what copy are we actually replacing in this contract, just the one downstairs?
Yes.
Okay, and, and that...
But wi, within that replacement, that is, that's the key replacement, within that, there's an upgrade to the Parks copier, and there's an upgrade to the, um, so really, they're replacing those two as well.
So, we have a three hundred and forty dollar per month contract with who on the copier that's back here, who is that with?
Xerox.
Xerox, okay, and you say that it's not, um, we can't buy out of that contract right now, or it's not worth us doing that?
Yeah.
And there's, you said there was about two or three years left on that contract, is that right? Okay, and so, the increase then would be just on the other, the other copiers at the, in the various departments, downstairs, the one that's over on the executive side of the city hall, and then the Parks Department, or am I, am I wrong?
No, the, 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 the executive side would stay the same.
Okay.
The Xerox would stay the same, the police department, the old copier would leave, the new one, it'd be just like the one we have upstairs, would go down there, and then they would, uh, exchange out a Parks, Parks copier and a fire department copier.
I understand, maybe I didn't say that the way I meant to say it, those are the ones that's on the other contract, the one that's over on the executive side of the office downstairs, and the Parks Department, those are the ones that's on the RJ Young contract?
Correct.
Okay. And that contract is gonna be a net increase starting next fiscal year of a hundred and how much dollars a month?
Thirty.
Okay, those are my questions.
Um, one more comment, and then I'll call for a vote if nobody else has, um, one, but elementary school, uh, Westwood Elementary, they have three copiers in the whole building, and they run copies all day long, I see it, and, um, run it all day long. The high school has two copiers, and they're all in the same room, and they run copies all day long, I guess if I ever went to Figure View Elementary, now, I'm, no, I'm comparing this to elementary schools, but I know how many papers are ran all day long, most government agencies have to share, and especially if you're in the same building, we basically have a copier for every department, that's fine, we, we voted on that a couple of years ago, that's what we want to do, um, but I just want to make sure that everybody's clear, if we started talking to some other government agencies, and they're in the same space, they probably share copiers, if, um, I never got a second on my, um, amended motion, so, anybody want a second? Okay, that dies, we're back to the first and second on the original motion, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries, and that brings us to... Let's see where that brings us, back up here, um, well, ten F was, should have been the last, um, one, and so this is our time for our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Commissioners, uh, just an update on Channel nineteen, I'm hoping that as soon as we can get it on their schedule, that we'll be having Channel nineteen back up and going, um, Ms. Hawke can, uh, report that, now, as far as the YouTube, being edited, I have no idea whether it's, why, if it was done, or why it was done, so I don't have any expertise on, on YouTube, so, but I, I will check into it and see what I can find out tomorrow.
Channel nineteen will be up when?
As soon, as soon as we can get on their schedule to get their technician out here, and we're waiting on a certain technician, and I don't want to go into that part while we're waiting on a certain technician.
He should be back from vacation next week, so...
So as soon as we get that on their schedule, then hopefully they'll be right up and going, so I'm hoping that there's nothing else wrong, uh, as far as, the next thing, I'd like to compliment all of our emergency staff for the second bout that we had with ice and snow, they've continued to do a good job, police, fire, Parks Department, public works, they all pitched in and helped out, and, you know, I couldn't ask for better staff anywhere than what we have here, you know, it's, uh, and as far as the department heads helping out with the budget, and us lowering the spending, regardless of what Tom and I say, it's their help too that helps us lower the spending, you know, so, um, I, it, here again, I couldn't ask for better staff to work with, that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Okay, um, just clarification, I know Channel nineteen, y'all are, um, you got the Parks fixed, so we're just waiting to get hooked back up. Okay, and then the streaming, if it's going out streaming live, we, we've been doing that, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
As far as it being edited, I have no knowledge of that.
Okay, so if it goes live, and somebody, a citizen saw the whole thing, but then goes to watch the YouTube, and there's chunks taken out, um, you say that didn't happen?
I don't know that it didn't happen, but I do know it's set to automatically upload, it's not something that is manually done, it's an automatic upload as soon as it finishes.
Mayor, I was, I'll go ahead and say, I was shocked when you told me that today, uh, at school, and I, I just, and, and I, and I, I spoke with Greg Roble, or texted, and he said, just what she said, that it is an automatic function of YouTube that once it plays live on YouTube, it automatically downloads on there, so we've, we've got to figure out what has happened. I have not, I have not had the chance to view it myself, but you said that it's, that it's there, and there's certain missing, so...
Somebody just told me, yeah, um...
We, we need to look into that.
Somebody told you, or did you just see it?
No, somebody told me, I had a citizen that said, I saw it, and, um, then I went to go, and I didn't know you were even gonna say anything about it.
I mean, do we know what it was?
Um, I think there's been more than one, but, um, the one they're referring to is the finance meeting, um, but there, I think there's some where, um, this person said that it didn't start, sometimes it, you know, it may be, that it wouldn't start until later, or whatever, and I don't know what's going on, I just think it's a real problem, because we've worked really hard on transparency, and I would hate to, um, think that something was changed, but on the finance committee, which I have not had a chance to go back and, um, view it myself, but the finance, they said it started, then it stopped, a section, and then starts again, so is, is that what, I haven't watched it, have, you've seen it, okay?
I watched two or three different ones. Watched the second half, and then you watched the first half, it was weird, but that was...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that's all, I, yeah.
Mayor, I, I noticed it on a couple of the meetings that I watched where it didn't start, it was a delayed start at the very beginning of the meeting, but I was actually at those meetings, and I went back and watched, so that, the, really the only thing that was missed was simply calling the meeting to order, essentially, so it appeared you were coming in after, later on in the process, but in reality, you weren't, if you were here, I mean, I understand that it may give that impression, but also that may be a function of YouTube that's actually splitting it up, I don't know, I don't know why it would be split up, but cert, I don't think anybody's taking any action to deliberately try to, try to do that, I, I would hope.
I, I would too.
Time delay built in, so they can edit it?
Forty seconds is the delay from live, what I just said, forty seconds, you can watch it at home.
Yeah, well, most, most of those, they have a censoring that's monitoring it for inappropriate items and stuff, so...
And what you can do is maybe, Mr. Hall, I mean, tonight there was a finance meeting, you can make sure, check that feed, make sure, because if there's a glitch in the system, we probably, um, need to figure that out, because it doesn't appear very transparent when it look, a meeting starts, then the black, I know that we, surely we don't have, um, you know, it, I would hope that it would only be a glitch, but, um, anyway, I...
Need to be addressed.
It does need to be addressed, and I think that's something maybe, and then, like I said, to, like, was the finance meeting a live stream? Yes, I got a shake in the back, it was a live stream tonight.
I just, I just pulled it up, and it is, it shows that it's on there, it's forty-three minutes and twenty seconds long, and it shows our meeting right under it live, so, I don't know how long that meeting went, but...
About, it was about right, about forty-five minutes.
Okay, well, if there's not any more discussion for Mr. Hall, I just appreciate you looking into that. Um, Mr. Contral?
Thank you, Mayor, I've spoken probably quite enough tonight, uh, some instance, I think it was probably necessary, but talking more than normally did, I'll, I'll take just a very short amount of time here to, um, bring the board up to date on a couple of items in the legislature, actually, the third one came out of the legislature, but it was out of committee, uh, back in either November, December, or January, we passed a resolution relative, relative to bullying in the workplace, that appears that it's gonna be probably the next very active topic for litigation, uh, at that time, if you remember, I had said that the legislature had directed several committees to come up with a model ordinance for bullying, and as I said then, it would be more extensive than the stopgap resolution we had, to give us some protection, and it is, it goes into great detail of definitions of what constitutes this, and what constitutes that, and, for the more, better word, and what don't constitute this and that, that has been published, it was just recently published, it was due March first, and they may have gotten it out March first, but, uh, I picked it up, I think about the fifth, uh, I'm expect to have a resolution ready for the board to consider, uh, not a resolution, I'm sorry, an ordinance repealing our resolution, and, uh, this requires an ordinance not to repeal the resolution, but to enact, uh, what the state committee came up with, I cannot have that by the meeting next Thursday, but I expect to have it by April second, uh, it'll be in, should be in your packet, if it's not, we'll have to delay it for the next, but I see no reason... Uh, it'll be in, it should be in your packet. If it's not, we'll have to delay it till the next one, but I see no reason why I can't. The last two things, and I'll hit those real quickly. Uh, the legislation that, uh, we're real interested in that was sponsored, uh, by Senator Johnson to, uh, enact the, uh, consent, uh, legislation, so that we can stay within our charter, and then, once we get that passed, but, but once they get it passed, and then we have some authority to do that, we won't have to read the captions to the ordinances anymore. Um, there's two bills on that. House Bill three one five, I'm sorry, that's not, but, it's House Bill, uh, four one four. It has been assigned, and it's on the calendar for discussion. It got out of the first committee, got to the second meeting of the committee, uh, and, uh, an amendment was proposed to it. I looked at the amendment hurriedly, but what the amendment essentially does is the municipalities are still gonna have to enact it if they want it by an ordinance, but they put some language in there to the effect that, uh, we had in our resolution, so it didn't cause me a great deal of concern. We just have to put it, uh, we won't have to put it in the ordinance, that it provides for the amendment for basically, uh, the method of uh, removing stuff from the consent agenda, or requires you to get it from the agenda, and uh, they just repealed, uh, removed amend the, one section of the proposed, uh, legislation, and put in there what we had in the, uh, in the resolution about if any board member wants to remove it from the calendar, then they can. And, uh, that copies of your consent agenda be, uh, required by the statute to be published, and we were already doing that. So, that was the only change, and they've got that to give us to be discussed in the House, uh, the seventeenth of March of, of this, uh-
Year?
The Senate Bill five forty, uh, swore they had to hash out the differences between the two, and the amendment uh, says that it's, uh, ready to be sent to the House, and I'm assuming with them, gonna discuss it on the seventeenth. It'll get to the House before the seventeenth. The other bill that I wanted to discuss that will have some, will have some effect on the city, has a great deal of effect on, on the recorder. Uh, I was looking at some, I knew it was too late for this session, but I was looking for some information on the difference in the Open Records Act between, uh, copies that you won't made and picked up, or emailed, or sent to you by courier, or whatever. There's a specific number of, uh, time that you cannot charge for, basically one hour, the first hour you can't charge for. You can't charge for the first twenty-five copies. That is not in the legislation relative on the Open Records Act about if I wanna come and sit down and look at the copies. And if you look at what the work is on your city recorder, or whoever's doing this, it's, it's the same, because the first thing you gotta do is, uh, tell me if I'm wrong, but pull up all of those documents that somebody's requested. And then somebody's gotta go through that knows what to redact and what to leave in there. And the only way you can do that and be sure you've properly redacted it is run copies of the, of the originals, go through and redact it, and then run copies of the redacted copies, because anybody's got an imagination. If I let you have the one that, before it was redacted, you can turn it around backwards and read it, or you can put a little heat lamp on it, or you can take a pencil and mark it on the back, and then you've got a problem with not properly redacting the information before you release it. So, I was looking for something, uh, to present, have the legislation, uh, brought up at the next, um, session, and I discovered that there was already something in this leg- uh, legislative, legislative section, session. I'll get it right in a minute. Uh, House Bill three one five, that's sponsored by Representative McDaniel, and Senate Bill three twenty-eight, that's sponsored by Sen- Senator Tracy, in essence does, it combines the, the two and says, okay, if you want copies, or if you want to come sit down and look at it, get the first hour, then the person that, that gets the, collecting the information, you can charge for their, for their, uh, uh, labor. And if you designate copies you want, you charge for the actual physical copies you get. Now, that in a way, I was not looking for this to try to keep somebody from getting the records that they need, that they want to see. Uh, I mean, public's business should be done in the public, and whether I like it or not, there's a statute there that says that. But I, I think, you know, the public business, if you're conducting public business, then you, you, uh, it should be open to the public. The very few times that, that we have executive sessions, it's about something that's pending legally, and a lot of times in those, excuse me, I'm informing the board about the strategy we expect to use and this kind of stuff, and the legislature allows for that, because I don't really wanna go to the courthouse when I have published what our strategy's gonna be, and my adversary has a month to study it, and I don't know what it is gonna be. But, uh, if this passes, if anybody has any influence with the legislature that would like to see this pass, uh, most people that come in get a reasonable number of copies for what they're doing. I have talked with some of my colleagues, uh, that are city attorneys, and somebody had said, well, I don't know what I, I don't particularly know what I wanna get, so why don't you just get together, and I'll fill out my form, or why don't you just get together about the last five years of these? And I'll come down and look and see what I need. Well, they come down and look, and they get, uh, excuse me, they look through all this, and they get two copies, or they look through three copies, and, and they're gone. You've got all that labor to finance somebody. If you refine what you want to look for, that wouldn't have been any problem. But I think when this legislation first came up, that's what they envisioned, and now they realize that don't work, because one of my colleagues said, and I'll stop with that war story, that he had a room that was about twelve by twelve with a bunch of boxes in it that somebody wanted to see something about a certain, uh, thing that had occurred there for the last fifteen years, and he wanted all those documents. He comes down and gets three or four copies, and he's gone, and now they gotta leave those out there, because they don't know when he may come back. And that means you gotta go through all those and redact all redactable information. So, if you, if you're interested in that, and I know Ms. Brandy is, you might wanna call your representative and say you need to, to support those, those particular bills. And, and it's not the state legislature's intent to stop anybody from seeing public records. But when you go through all those, and some of those show up at all. The guy I was talking to didn't show up at all. And one other thing I did with this, uh, when I found it out, I called a couple of people that I knew, and I said, are you aware of this bill that are city attorneys? And they said, no. So, I contacted the executive director of TMAA, the Tennessee Municipal Attorneys Association, and he sent, uh, the information about these two bills to every city attorney in the state of Tennessee. So, you know, if people don't want it, then they don't want it, but if, if you think it would be worth your while, uh, you might wanna give the man a call. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Contral? Okay, Commissioner Busell. Okay, Commissioner Crutcher.
Mayor, Mr. Hall, I just wanna let you guys know, Commissioner, well, not be your next meeting. Something that I had planned well before I was elected. I hate to miss, but-
Well, you deserve your break, and we'll, uh, miss seeing ya. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. We, uh, we covered the two things I was going to cover. I was gonna answer Henrietta's question, and like I said, when you told me that today, that was very shocking, so.
I was surprised, too.
Hope we find out what's going on there. Thank you.
Um, Vice Mayor Sutton?
Well, I just wanna thank everybody again, the Budget Department, the Code Department. As far as doing the reviews and things goes, we've just barely scratched the surface. So, you're gonna see a lot of these every time, at least once a month, where we went in and fixed them, because, uh, in my opinion, a long time ago, when they just said, well, it's the universal code, so, every one of you needs to do it. And that, that kinda shocked me when we started doing all that, so. There are a lot of changes that's gonna be made for the good, and for simplification of understanding the codes, where people on the street knows what those codes are. Um, I just wanna thank everybody for their hard work. And keep in mind that we may not have more snow fall, but we have inclement weather at all, tornado warnings, things like that. Keep checking on your neighbors and things, 'cause, you know, they, uh, some of them can't get out, and, and they're out there, so keep an eye on them. That's all we got.